I think on the right side.
I think it is.
Alright, because the one with, in the courthouse, the flag's.
But if it's a, I think if it's a speaker, it's on the right hand speaker, but if you, I mean, if it's like if there's a podium there, but I think if it's facing. Well, I don't know now, yeah, you got me mixed up.
I think when it's two flags, you put the revenue on the right and stuff. Yeah, I heard that.
Oh, because we're on, we're on one flag, it's in our, okay.
Right, I know.
I, I got a, I got a flag group booking to work. Hey, how you doing?
Great, great, good to see you.
Yeah.
We, we're gonna start the meeting. You know what always scares me when I see somebody my age with a cane?
It's your dog.
Okay, alright, hang in there then. But, but, but it's worse when we read the vituware about it. It's like, you can't see the worst. Alright, let's, uh, we'll go ahead and just start. We, are we on, we on live, um, that's probably becoming today's live.
You are there.
Sorry about everybody's 50 minutes. So I'm calling the night weekend board supervisor work session, um, uh, March thirteenth, seven P M. In the order. Um, thank everybody for coming before we get started. I've got the board members here and you got Ms. Tomer, the assistant county administrator, Mr. Costin, county administrator. Got Buddy Hyde, our emergency coordinator behind us, and of course Andrea Kelly is taking notes, and we had a guest come in, um, Ms. Dorton, so. Anyway, and, um, the, uh, the agenda's pretty simple. I just want everybody to know, we not, we don't have approval on the agenda per se, because it's all about the budget. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. With that said, um, let's go to the Lord first, we'll pray. Lord, again, we thank for this time that we've come together and followed, um, just looking at some of the videos that we just shared, uh, we know that so many people is having, um. It's just a world that's just upside down right now. And Lord, we just ask you to, uh, continue God giving us wisdom and guidance, um, and let us be good stewards for the county. Uh, Lord, now we just ask you to, uh, give us a collaborative spirit, so we can, um, figure out ways to, uh, continue, uh, giving people their services. But yet we know that it's charges for those services. And we ask all these things through Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, gave honor to, um, God, so let's go to the country and pledge allegiance. If, if you can't stand, I, I.
Come on.
I, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I, I do, I was trying to tell everybody from the, the streaming who's all arrived, uh, also Spike, uh, Dumbo, he didn't, he didn't show up, and he's in camouflage, but you might not be able to see him on television.
Yeah, I'm gonna be some balance.
Alright, with that said, I'm gonna turn over to our staff, um, and to Mr. Costin and Ms. Tomer, y'all will, uh, lead us on this, uh, budget, uh, first presentation.
Alright, so let me start by saying a couple of things. Uh, at the state level, we have something that's called a skinny budget. Uh, that's going to be important when we get around to some of the school issues.
Um, is that what the state's calling it?
That's what the state is calling it. They're calling it a skinny budget, okay. Um, these are raw numbers. Let me put it to you simply. Everybody's everything is included in this budget. The staff has not lined out a single item. Alright, I'd like to do something a little different from your packet. You've got, uh, in your, your packet before you, the, uh, draft budget for fiscal year. Put that one aside for a second. That's primarily on the general fund. I'd like to draw your attention first, so to, to this one, which is the school fund. So it's the second item in the tackle. The schools have presented to us a balanced budget. Um, this reflects favorable action taken by the school board after the budget public here. It is based on an average daily membership of one thousand seven hundred twenty-five. Now, they ended the last year, the last school year at seventeen twenty-two, and right the other running at seventeen fourteen, so we think that number is a, a good number to work with. The required local effort match is five million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. That Amelia Nodaway Technical Center funding is two hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So let me stop right there. Uh, there has been some talk about Amelia pulling out. Uh, to do that, they would have had to give notice in February. That notice did not come. So we're looking at another academic year of, of partnership with Amelia. Um, this budget also reflects summaries received as late as Thursday and Friday of last week. It does not reflect any capital improvements program items, okay? So that's what we've got on the school budget.
Yes, I'm sorry, could you give me the amount of Amelia Nodaway Technical Funding again? Is that delineated separately here or homeless?
Uh, no, it's rolled into the local match, and that's, that's actually on the, the front page, the general fund page.
There's a local, there's a local spot for the school funding.
Okay.
That equals right here.
Okay.
That's the total.
Alright, so you have local funding, uh, upper left, the thorough line down.
Five million seven hundred.
Three, nine, yeah, that's the total. That includes your required local effort match of five million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. In, uh, in, to, uh, to supervisor Shublin question, the A and T sun funding of two hundred eighty thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars.
So, so that's wrapped up in that, is that what y'all say? Okay, got you, alright. Now, well, okay, we're trying to predict the weather, but we don't know what Amelia wants to do right now. We, we know that this next budget year, we think they will stay.
We do know that they're committed into another academic year.
Okay.
Finishing this year and next year.
Just curious, and I don't want to get bogged down when I have a school meeting tonight, but what is the reasoning, what, why is Amelia, is it because they got a better place to care the children for workforce development?
They, they have been, and I understand that they've been going to, um.
Chesterfield?
As well, as well as Nodaway, as well as, uh, doing some opportunities with, with community colleges.
It may not be what we're doing wrong, it may be somebody's doing something better.
Cause they're, they're all three.
Clover Hill High.
Is that what they've turned into? I saw some, I saw some of it, okay, so that's quite up the street.
Very close.
Yeah, I get you.
Well, that's, that's the old Clover Hill High, or the main drag of, of.
From Amelia, that's pretty slow.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
There's a, a new Clover Hill High, that's a traditional high school that's on the backside.
Alright.
Alright, um, so basically, uh, that's it, and there's, uh, what we have right now, and there's more to follow in terms of what we hear from the school.
Alright.
Alright, I'd like for you to go to the next sheet to look at are the other revenue estimates, and these are the different funds, it's, it's this one.
This one?
Yes, okay. Alright, so the first one in the group is the L R A. And you can see from the projected revenues, projected expenditures, um, there's a, a difference of three hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars, alright. When you all met with the department heads that wanted to meet with you, uh, Mr. Hawkins came in and kind of gave you a, a one down of. A lot of work that needed to be done out of the L R A. Um, much of this price tag on the right hand side, the expenditure side, the side reflects a lot of that, uh, but obviously it doesn't balance. Now, what we would suggest to make it balance would be to reduce, and you focus on the right hand side, the Pickett General Property. Reduce the, that amount by one hundred thousand dollars. And also the Pickett Park Lodge, reduce that amount by one hundred thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't mean that work won't be done, it just means that. In total, two hundred thousand dollars is worth of work less would be done. And this is primarily repair maintenance work.
Does he think he can do that much work in the end?
I was wondering the same thing. I mean, that's what I was, I was wondering the same thing. Did, did this money involve some contractors bringing in some local contractors?
Get bids.
Some stuff.
Right, right.
Um, okay.
Breakdown of what those projects are?
He's putting that together, yeah, we have, we, we, we've got, he's, he's given us.
I think he was gonna give y'all a list at that group meeting, but I can give you one.
Oh, when, when we go.
I can send you what he sent.
Or ticket thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, he was, we're talking.
Go ahead and send that in advance, and we, uh, we still would like to try to get the L R A meeting out there before the, uh, renaming ceremony.
Renaming ceremony, yeah, that's what we're, so I'm just, I can't remember y'all, I'm talking about Bolson, and I thought, I was hoping we didn't put in the money, I hope, I hope money was coming out of the way, what have we got to do from Bolson?
We still shoulder property.
We still own the building.
We still own the building.
Yeah, so what, but when.
We sell the budget for repairs and maintenance if something happens.
It looked like he was pretty specific, thirty thousand six hundred fifty, I thought maybe it's something like.
It's for different, for different lots of property insurance, repair and maintenance.
Yeah, but, okay, nothing like capital.
No.
No, okay. So, alright, so to try to, to try to bring it back into balance, uh, strike a hundred thousand, this is just a suggestion, strike a hundred thousand off the Pickett General Property. Strike a hundred thousand off Pickett Park Lodge, and then, um, going over to your revenue side, look at picking up, um. A rent, with a rent increase, if you were to increase the rent on the lodge occupants by fifty percent. That would pick you up another hundred thousand dollars. So you close the gap of three ninety-two, four ninety-nine, down to three hundred. Now, let's talk about the rents. That's something that Mr. Hawkins said, that the rents are probably fixed sometime in the nineteen, late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. Um, the rents have been, um, very, very, very low. They could come up, and they would still not be, um, significant in terms of. Competing against, uh, the private, some, for some respect, competing against the private sector. We're not, um. Way, I'm trying to way undercut the private sector. Then the final amount of the, 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 trying to get it closed, we had a meeting today with, um, the, uh, Mr. Rose and, uh, Mr. Taylor with Davenport. And they had some, uh, strategies for investing that would, uh, if we alter some of the investing that we've, we've been doing. Um, particularly going after U S Treasury notes, uh, we could probably close that gap on the ninety-two thousand. So those would be the, the four steps. Take a hundred thousand out of the prop, general property, a hundred thousand out of the park lodge on the expenditure side. Increase rents on the lodge and, uh, do a little bit, uh, uh, do, do something different with the investment and perhaps even. Double that ninety-five thousand income off of the, uh, off of the investments.
So, and, and y'all, excuse me, I just, for some reason, I can't wrap around it. Let, let's use an example, like going up on rent, I mean, it's fifty percent, I mean, so. Can you give me examples of two bedroom for what right now?
One for three thirds.
One bedroom room for?
Three hundred thirty dollars.
For the whole month? Okay, that's a little bit, um, that's very nice.
Well, let me ask you, with all the work Blackstone's done, why haven't we rented the residential people?
Guess because we have the prop down there. And now, I hear you, I'm.
I mean.
Well, well, what we're doing, if we got it too cheap, we're subsidizing, we're, we're not helping the towns for us, you know, I mean, look, at least we had competitive, well, you, well, somebody would say. Uh, I don't wanna say it, Pickett, I think I'm going inside a town in Blackstone, you know, I, I don't know, like, what, what's y'all's thought on that? I mean, we, we gotta go up, but we, we, we wanna make a decision, just, we're not gonna do that tonight, but we need to make a decision that's, um.
We need, we need some guidance on how to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To bring this into balance.
Or can we all agree three thirds too cheap?
Yeah.
Okay, not, and I hear you, what you're going there, you're going all the way while we're in, but, um, how, how many, well, I guess, that, okay, so that's some of the things we need to see when we take a tour.
That's right.
Okay, like, you know, what, what kind of condition is in and.
Well, the projects too, before we move a hundred thousand dollars out of any of these, why don't we get a project list and see if it's something more attainable? I mean, if, if.
That's true too.
Because if the project list gets cut by two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we don't need, need to move nothing.
Yeah, I, I. What is y'all's thoughts?
I think that's a good idea, let's look at the project list.
Okay. Alright, but what we're hearing from staff is, this is, this is your number, and how you gonna balance it, and as a suggestion of balancing is what you're doing, right?
And seeing, and seeing the project list, we kind of get to the same, we get to the same point the same way, either, you know, we find a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. Dollars worth of items off this project list, and here are the ones we wanna do, here are the ones.
Just privatize it.
Yeah, just privatize, yeah, and it might, it might save you some time just doing it. That makes, makes it feel like they're on so much pressure, get so much done out there, and clearly, there's a lot to get done out there.
Right. And if I, it might have been so cheap too, the, before, that we, they technically did some renovation, I think, didn't we?
Okay, for a while.
We know renovation, so these places are, are they old buildings, I mean, they look.
Yeah, they're the old ones.
They are.
Dormitories, and it's, uh, it's pretty much the way you got them is the way they are.
But the lodge is nice. I know, that's why, I, 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 that's why I wondered if it is.
Cause they're not upgraded, you can't go up there.
Oh, alright, we're gonna make a decision on that, okay.
Thank you for the.
Or is it you all wanna see the, the?
Yeah, and then, and, but, but we're writing your suggestions then.
Okay.
Got you, that's, do, do note it.
Alright.
Okay.
Moving on to the next one, uh, that would be the E nine one one fund. Uh, there's some good news there, um, revenues are projected to actually exceed expenditures. Um, so if that happens, uh, what we would suggest is actually moving some of those, um, additional revenues over into, um. The public safety radio communication system project.
I got you.
That'll be simple, okay.
Okay.
Um, here's the fun one, it's all the ways. Alright, so we're looking at the, we're approximately two hundred fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars out of balance.
What's that number again, can I?
Two fourteen, two two zero.
Well, that, is that the difference between that one million, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then on the right side is the expenditures, in other words, we believe.
Oh, yes, sir. Alright. Alright, so, um, in the proposed budget, and you see it listed there on the right hand side, um, is the solid waste study phase two. Now, I'm hoping later this week, you all will sign off on the contract with, um. Formally Draper A, um, and proceed with the solid waste study, phase one. Again, we'll give you multiple options, phase two, because after you've studied your multiple options, and you pick one or two, it'll be a, a deeper dive. And so, um, you got the twenty thousand there to cover the phase two, uh, study. So here's some things that we've thought about, just thought about, to try to bring this into, into balance. Um, you could balance this by moving reserves to cover the difference. And I'll come back to that in a minute. You could lower the amount that you take out of reserves by altering, um, the hours that the convenience centers are open. Now, just as an example, as an example, if you closed on Sunday, you save thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. If you close on any weekday, you save thirty-nine thousand. This is basically a kick to can proposal, just to balance the budget, move money out of reserves to cover the waiting fill. And wait on the results of the study, because the results of the study will, you know, should, should really give you some, some in-depth information that you can use to say, okay. Folks, I think it comes down to this. With all due respect, do we stay in the solid waste business? And if so, what do we have to do in the way of fees and practices, or do we get out, and if we get out, how do we get out?
Well, okay, anybody wanna, wanna say something? I, I, I'm probably busting them all here, so. So let me say my fees, that'll put it down there, so, uh, this, let, let me get this study wrapped around here, cause, you know, John keeps saying it's his idea, alright, so. Well, it, it might have been, but sometimes I don't listen to Mr. Orff a lot of times, but when my daughter got married, I went to Lexington, that's when I first discovered it. Turned out a duck, why she went up there, let's don't go there. But anyway, so they had this dumpster site that you go, I watched it, the car went up there, and the gate just opened. And then they went in, but the, and I parked there, and the gate went open, okay, so it was obvious that, that was a taxpaying person, dah 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 dah. And, and the reason I'm throwing that out there, because that, that's just using technology to advance the future, was less labor intensive. And, and I, and I, what I'm asking though is, will the study give us options like that?
Yes, if, if you want them, yes, they'll give you.
So we gotta interview them and say, hey, I guess what I'm asking, y'all see what I'm asking, like, is it gonna be just a little bit of options, or we gonna have, how far we gonna take?
Phase, phase one's, uh, have you, with multiple options, and, um, I'll certainly convey this conversation to them once they get started. Cause I have a checklist of people that I'm wanting to talk to, the towns, the financial staff, the operators, um, and. They'll come back to you with, okay, you stay in, this is kind of what you think you need to, to stay, to do, to stay in, to get out, uh, you privatize it, you, you do some revenue sharing. They'll give you those options. Now, if you wanted to go granular on something like that, that's where phase two comes in. If, if we were to stay in, how do we run the convenience centers?
Right.
And what you're talking about is, it's like, like an easy pass.
Yeah, yeah, right, or that's some, you know, and I know some people might say, ah, I don't wanna do that, Steve, but it could save you labor.
You will, you'll save them labor, and then it, uh, plus if they're not paying the taxes, the treasures will go and deactivate if they can use it. And they come with full camera sets up, and it was, that'd get rich on about a hundred thousand dollars for sure.
So your point of it is, if they can do that, then you might move that ninety-six percent of paying your taxes up to ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, because you ain't got a way to do with your trash. However, uh, uh, some citizens will say, well, Steve, they gonna put the trash on the ground, and, and they will do that.
With the camera, you got full camera.
No, I mean, on the ground, in the country.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's the, that's the, that's the catch twenty-two of that thing.
Are they doing it in there?
If we approve the contract this week, you probably told us timeline for when phase one might be completed, we get any ideas?
That's in the con, I'm sorry, that's in the contract. I know that I wrote the motion to acknowledge that one month, that, you know, change in the contract, but. I think we were looking at June or July, beginning with the first reporting. So you'll be, you'll be in the next fiscal year before you.
In the fourth. So, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe it's no random, but I don't think we gotta cut back on convenience center times, we need to go on this four day reserves, um, see those numbers, Mr. Vaughn, Helen, where y'all.
You could get away with closing it on Sunday.
You think we can?
Yes.
You can see with board, I mean, the process.
To be honest with you, if you're going to go live for two hundred dollars, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in reserves to balance it, what's the difference in two hundred and fourteen thousand?
That would be a service. It's a service to the county, to our constituents. They have to do something with the trash.
I, 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 I thought you, well, we had this thing, I could have swore you said, we need to be open on Sundays, but people taking trash out of the church, man. Y'all know that?
That wasn't me.
Helen, was that you?
No.
No. Where we go, I don't know.
But they do take it after church.
Right, right, I've heard that.
Yeah.
That, that, some of the elderly, they get, like, they go out, they, they go to church, go have lunch, and then they take the trash.
They take the trash, that's right.
And, cause I think we open up like after church, isn't it?
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think a lot of people work at six days a week, Sunday's only day they can run, and we only talking about three, three and a half hours, or something like that, it's like three and a half. I, I think some black and sisters basically, I think we won't hear it, just options.
Alright, so, so I'm hearing it's okay if we try to balance.
Yes, with the, with the, I mean, we just want to dip in the general fund, and, and I hear Mr. Vaughn, I know what he's saying, but I, I just don't know if we wanna tackle that bear.
Alright, now let me.
That's poking the bear.
Uh, let me, let me ask, let me give you one more, okay? So, once you get the second phase report, and you're into the new fiscal year, um, you can always amend your budget. Um, and make your, make your adjustments on your solid waste side.
Well, we expected to get the second part of that study back before the end of the year as well.
Before the end of the county year?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have to double check. I'll have to double, I think so.
I think it would.
You'll definitely be in the fiscal year. I, I, I know what you're thinking, like, try to implement something and have it start changing or.
I, I understand.
Hmm, alright.
Okay.
And maybe something that could, if the hippos go in the back end, start saving some revenue in there that, that ended this, uh, oh, just like, we're actually.
Alright, that's right.
Okay, 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 a little more?
Yes, sir.
Alright, the last one on this sheet is the planning fund. This is, this is the, basically what some people come to know as the, uh, housing, uh, project fund. Um, you get a little bit of income, there's not a whole lot that's left out there, these are, uh, low interest loans, um. Ms. Tomer's, less than a thousand dollars is, is owed, and that would be the last payments, and so you'll have this fund of approximately seventy-three thousand dollars, uh, sitting there. Now, Blackstone has requested forty, and that is in the budget, okay? That request is reflected in the budget. Um, uh, for, uh, some housing work, um, now, the, uh. This, this is entirely a board's decision, if you wanna give it, hold it back, whatever. The revenue is minimal and nearly complete, now, there's some interest, uh, Burkeville, the crew. I have, uh, asked them, do they have any interest in, in any kind of housing projects or anything like that? Of course, they want more information. I have spoken with the Department of Housing and Community Development staff, um, and the, the biggest concern for them is that neither Burkeville nor Crew have a defined project area.
Yeah, cause Burkeville had one, we had one when I first got on the board.
That was this project, so that, that is this project over the years.
And that is residential only, is that right?
It's, it's, it's pretty, it, it pretty much comes out of the wash, you know, which, whatever you put in it, they supposed to pay monthly, and then, and then, so it's really, um.
Give them, give them people a spot to get on their feet, if that makes sense, and then.
Can you say?
Or if it's owner occupied, it's not like real property.
A thousand, seventy-some thousand, and so what is the forty thousand?
That's the request from Blackstone.
Okay.
That's the request from Blackstone.
So that would be the expenditure, and then the revenues represent the second amount, because.
It's a transfer from the fund now.
Okay.
Uh, I will tell you that, uh, Blackstone's original request was for a hundred thousand, which obviously we can't do, cause we don't have that much money. Uh, so I asked them to knock it back down, recognize that they also received fifty thousand dollars over. Uh, but, so that's, that's one for you all to decide. But there, like I said, there is a, there is an interest, we had some communications, um, this, this weekend or the weekend with, uh, Mayor Mistobik. Uh, or Crew about looking for some opportunities.
So, so I'm just asking, uh, from what I remember hearing, um, uh, that Norbeck, Philip, he was saying that, you know, the, I like the way that he's talking about the weatherization, like. You know, getting the windows fixed, and getting the covers so the wind wouldn't blow, then, then it helps them with the fuel cost, you know? Um, so what I, what I understand is, is, it, so you gotta have a, a cer- certain area that has to be done, like multiple houses, so, do you know? I guess that's what, that's what Mr. Mayor Welch is probably looking for, I guess, is how many, um, he don't have a certain set place.
Did, did, did the Burkeville or Crew have a defined project area? That's, that's the words that the D H C D uses, a defined project area.
Blackstone's request, the funds go to one specific project.
Okay. You don't know how many forty thousand dollars, is it two houses, you gotta have four houses, ten houses? Oh. So he, he got, he got, alright, well, let's just start with that, maybe that's what I understand. So this is just one house, forty thousand dollars.
I think you have a hundred miles, should end in the middle.
Oh, I got you, so, okay, well, with Blackstone, I mean, Crew and Burkeville should find one house.
Some people have called me, but, um. I think they have the wrong idea of how the money is used.
Oh, I got you.
You know, because it should be a house that's owned right down, and then you have to bring it up to.
Alright, I got you. So, so there's a lot to it, more, it's more to it, but Philip, I think Blackstone was done as before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have.
He's got, Philip's got it down to the science, right? Okay. I wish we could get that down to the science to develop, develop, um, um, alright, okay, so. Basically, it comes out in the wash, what you did is went down a hundred thousand to forty thousand. One, one, one house for Blackstone, and two hundred dollars for evidently there's one housing project.
That, that, that's really, uh.
That's administrative.
Administrative, yeah, because.
From the district one.
You know, when the, when the note, when the person makes their last payment, and you all have done, you all back there on this and more, means. Um, the attorney has to file the release of the, of the duty trust, and their legal filing fees and everything. We don't, we don't get a hassle notice.
C R C, is this act of scope? CRC, is this like just scope?
I've talked to them, uh, and I can go back to them, but, uh, you know, they, uh.
Somebody got identified.
Yeah, they identify the project area, it comes back to that project area, identification. And there is a lot of work to run more of these grants. There's a lot of work to run more of these grants. I did, I, I worked one in Greensville, uh, which was like a whole neighborhood rebuild. We did the exact same thing that they're doing in Blackstone. We were buying empty lots, building houses on, moving people out of shacks, putting them in a new house and having that income. So I'm, I'm very familiar with what Philip's doing, um, but if you're gonna need that approval, Burkeville.
Got you. Do they, does, do they have a grant writer?
Blackstone just here. Uh, they use Jackson, I think they use Jackson. Uh, she does a lot of her grants, yeah.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out what we can.
As you well know, Steve, the, uh, Commonwealth also helps. Get the grant right.
Right.
All right. All right, um, Mr. Toner just handed you this. We can go back to the top of the L R A, I mean, this is that list, and we'll get everybody a copy.
Yeah, this is what he brought to his bucket.
So that's, uh.
So what, you know, if, if we can, um, I just wanna make sure, Mr. Costin, so I like for the board to be able to. We, we'll tell the public that we're gonna go to the, um, renaming of the, uh, Fort Pickett, uh, Fort Barfoot, I think he's right. So, can we get together and do the tour, or do we have to be separate for the tour?
You know, we just have to announce that it's the L R A, get together to tour, uh, the, the premises. We can start at a given time, say the officers club. And, uh, Mr. Hawke has can take us around where he wants to take us and show us what he wants to show us. And I told him, I said, if we're doing this, we don't need to see every room of every building, we just need a sample.
So, do y'all want to do that before, that we, we can?
You haven't said it, we've talked about it, but we all haven't.
We're trying to rename.
We're trying to connect the. Uh, the ceremony, the ceremonies at one, the festivities start at eleven with displays.
Yeah, and they go to a hanger or something.
Right.
That's what it's ceremony is about. So they got displays, I saw that.
Eleven, eleven to three, the, the total thing is eleven to three, but the ceremony itself is at one.
So we have to do like nine?
About nine.
By nine o'clock?
Yep.
Oh, to do it in the morning before the.
Probably do it in the morning, unless we do it at eight.
Now, I don't think they got, they got, they got finger foods, I don't think it's gonna be a full course meal then, Mr. Vaughn. But we gotta figure that out.
Give us some of that in front.
You can pull out something. You can beat somebody with candy.
I can.
All right.
I want what I can.
So nine, nine o'clock, and then we'll wait for the, um.
And then it's gone at eleven.
I, I don't think there, everybody has to get there right at eleven.
Yeah, it's like walk through, see something. So I said we'd get in by twelve, walk it through, go to the lab, and, you know. And, and the second one, you can't make it, then we'll, we'll meet you at twelve if you can make that part, if you can't make it at all.
I'm told, Mr. Costin, I'm sorry, I can't commit to being off work.
I got you, I'm staying, okay, no problem. All right?
All right. Okay, um, we'll probably have this somewhat similar discussion Thursday night, so when you all are sitting. All right, so that's two sheets. Damn, let's look at the first sheet. This is the, uh, general fund. Uh, the gap between estimated revenues and estimated, uh, expenditures, and again, enough that's been cut. Is two million, seven hundred, one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Okay, so why the difference? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, back to, back to this one.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
This was the first, yeah.
How much?
Ten million and what?
Uh, two million, seven hundred, one thousand, three sixty-seven. So two, seven oh one, three six seven is the gap. Now, again, we're still in the process of working the budget. In our example, just today, we got the comp war figures. And, uh, we've tried to capture that in this document. So, what are the big ticket items? Well, what are the, what are some of the differences? Obviously, one of the big ones is a hundred, eight hundred, fifty-one thousand dollars for the radio, public safety radio communication system.
Where you got that at?
That, um, is in the expenditure side, is that in public safety? You put in public safety, it's part, part of public safety.
Is this a breakdown of all of this?
No, 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 that's something different. Or your, or your breakdown is, is in, is in.
We have to do a little more, really, for expenditures. The three pages, just the summary.
Yeah, this is, this is summary, summary, summary. All right, so you have, so what you're doing is when you're giving a specific number, though they're not showing here, you don't have to just let them know what line that is. Oh, oh, okay, um. Yes, okay, well, that public safety would be the, the eight, eight fifty.
Public safety, fifty-four, I saw.
Uh, uh, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, that's for the public safety radio system.
All right, so, okay, well, take time, I'll implement, so we're all too many in here. So, where, where, let me ask you this question before we get, because I'll make sure I get my mind right. Arbor funds, are we including that in the general, the revenue?
Okay.
Or we're not including that in the revenue?
In some, yeah, in some cases, um, we do have the Barfa projects captured. So let's, let's go back to.
Well, well, what I meant, okay. All right, so I guess, I guess I'm looking at the, um, this is just an example right here, I'm sorry. Public safety, you know, is one point eight, right?
Yes, okay.
And, and then, that, that's like trying to do nine one one. So, that, won't, won't that part of arbor funds?
No, broadband was part of.
Okay, broadband, is that on here?
No, the arbor funds are not.
So arbor's not included in expenditures or, okay, okay, that's what I need.
Public safety, you might think, but it's an eighty dollar grant that's been granted.
That's exactly what I'm thinking about, thank you, okay, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, okay, now.
Eight hundred and fifty-one thousand from the public radio system, that's just, that's really a much bigger expense, but this is just for the fiscal year.
Exactly, yep, yep. All right, um, actually, in Mr. Ward's question, I want to defer a great deal to Ms. Toner, because she's more familiar with the line-by-line items. There's the, um, another item in here is the, a new van, of a van to replace the van that we have. I think several of you have driven it out recently and, um, you call me an oxie, almost took a couple of you out, um, before my driving. That would be in, uh, General Financial Administration. All right, uh, this is an idea that I had last year, that I pulled last year, and that was a board of supervisors, district discretionary fund. And this is something to do over in Chesterfield, where each board member is allocated, uh, five thousand dollars. And they can, with the board's concurrence, they can dedicate money throughout the year to different projects that might pop up. That's one that we could probably push back a little year.
How much was that?
Twenty-five thousand, it was five thousand.
Like a discretionary fund.
Well, but in five districts, five districts, yeah, five districts. Yeah, so you would have five thousand each, each district all the way around.
But still, the board have to.
The board would have to.
Yeah, I just wouldn't be a Steve Vaughn.
Yeah, you would be, yeah, you would be handing out cash, it would still have to be.
Didn't we used to have a discretionary fund?
You still have a.
You have a board discretionary fund. This would be one that's allocated for each district.
Okay, what's the, what is the board out, uh, I'm sorry.
Things, things, um, donations that might come in.
No, 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 I mean, like, something comes up, well, how much we got budgeted, don't we, we don't have a budget.
Yeah, it's usually.
I think, okay.
And is that on the general finance administration as well?
That's on the legislation.
So the thought is trying to give every district a chance to, but we could still, still just stick with the hundred thousand that we always had. I'm trying to think of an example for discretionary fund this year, I don't know.
So technically, when the kids was asking money to go to Louisiana, we could afford five grand out of that discretionary fund, right?
Any, any member of the board with their own individual discretionary fund could do that. However, it would have to come back up to the board. It would be somewhat of a courtesy if, uh.
No, I get it.
Yeah, they have a lot of organizations close in Chesterfield. And when Tim Hollen in that crowd over there. Distribute this money, they give it to different organizations. But I like to see, rather than do that, I'd like to see this money go to our hearts.
Mr. Costin, can I go back to the new van? Is that just primarily for group travel, is a van used for all the purchases?
It's, it's primarily used for, for group tr- travel. I understand Mr. Procyce used it, uh, that, that was his vehicle that he went out and did, uh, sign postings and whatnot, yeah.
Well, I, I mentioned, um, Mr. Chev, since we brought that up, you know, socials, social services want a new van. And so, um, what's, what P mod is leaning towards that seems to be working, especially with, you know, we're taking patients out, bringing them back in, taking them out, bringing them back in. And social services has pretty much got the same type of mission, you know, trying to work with the children, kids, and family. Is, is to rent. In that way, see, what happens is all of a sudden, you, you pay three, well, we go through D G S, so you pay three hundred and something dollars a month, okay? Now, I don't know if we can go through D G S, I don't, Department of General Services, we may not be able to, we might as well go to rental company. But we see rentals times all the time. The thing about it is, once you get a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand miles on a vehicle, then you got a budget for a new vehicle. So you make, so let's say a new vehicle costs fifty thousand dollars, let's round it, okay? Well, the next three years, all of a sudden they'll come to the table, I need fifty thousand one dollars, was hard to track it that way, but if you, if you're renting it.
You mean rent no lease?
Lease, excuse me, lease. And then when it gets so many miles, the, the lease company goes, send it back to us, they do the maintenance on it, send it back to us, you get it all. And then you gotta weigh up, measure how many miles, you can watch the mileage, you see if people take, doing, taking big weight, like they shouldn't. You don't mean it's just, it's.
We've kind of set the precedent already with that.
That's possible, I'm sorry, you've already got leases at the, some of the heavy equipment at the landfill, to cut down all the maintenance expenses and.
How does that work?
We don't know yet.
We got one piece to rent, right? We got the second one sticking, you ask. The only thing I would ask in a situation like that, because I believe that lease is like right at fifty thousand dollars for five years. So that's, uh, what, two hundred and fifty thousand, or six years, whatever, what, you know? How much is a piece of equipment on the course of that five years?
Well, can we be more, I mean, stewards, I mean, what I'm asking is, could we, I guess, if we could, could we be more, could stewards just say, hey? We got social services, social workers, you have two vehicles that we're renting. And, and, but you know that we might borrow one at once in a while. Instead of buying them, you will let them sell to hell.
Only bad thing by this, uh, this bonus, if.
They need it, they need it.
And it could be out of power or anything.
Well, who else could we call for? I mean, what I'm trying to do is basically start a, um.
A fleet.
Fleet.
That was one.
When we're gonna stop giving to the school?
Yeah, the schools buy, let's see, all right, so the schools buy a new vehicle. I, I just figured, I wonder if we ought to look at the rental side of stuff, not, not police cars, I know that's a entirely different. Lease, I keep saying rental, lease, lease. Uh, because I think they changed the old, did the whole nine yards, I pick it up.
And one of the advantages with the, with the landfill situation is when the equipment goes down, they're obligated to bring us another piece of equipment. So we don't lose them, we don't lose time.
So that vehicle was almost five thousand, so it's on a sixty thousand a year, it's a five year for the three hundred thousand dollars, right? So that's the only question I would say is three hundred thousand dollars, plus it's under warranty, but it leasing comes out there.
All right, time, time, so, so what if, what if Mr. Zodi, we use him for example, and he's gotta go right down, look at that cemetery, you know, because it was, it's, what vehicle does he drive? He driving his own person?
But he hasn't one assigned to him, but he used his own personal vehicle, that trip, because it was off route.
Okay, bad example, but, but he does have a vehicle, but it's not the van?
No, he's using the, uh.
I wonder if like for at least a year, as far as the van goes, you just offer, I mean, the, the group travel is pretty limited to a couple, few times a year, right? Offer mileage reimbursement, whatever for use of personal vehicles.
Yeah, either that or actually rent for that occasion, because that's a one and done.
Yeah.
Not lease, but just rent for that day.
Oh, depending on what situation.
Yeah, you can go to, um, get a rental car place or something like that.
But, but like for Mr. Zodi, he, he does need to have a vehicle, that he don't have to drive his personal vehicle to do his job, you know? I understand it's. Yeah.
So we've converted for, well, Mr. Haidkine, he'll grab one of the sheriff's offices.
Looking at forty-five thousand in the budget for a van, maybe hold off on that this year, what if it's different options?
Well, I, I mean, you said it, God, but I didn't hear that, I heard that, I heard that he drove the former county inspector.
Chief is assigned to him, that's a county vehicle, when he needs it, yes.
So they're utilizing it to go, who, who's on the person?
The building official has a truck now.
Okay.
So we repurposed that vehicle.
All right, I'm sorry, okay, all right, I got you now, okay, I'm with you, I'm sorry about that.
Well, Mr. Haidkine, which I worked, we grabbed, were the sheriff's offices, uh, sheriff's, uh, vehicles that was going to the school board and dedicated it over to, to privacy.
I think, I think, I think it's, it's different, but I think we'll take a plunge and try, just try it for a year. And, and the next boy might say, ah, that's not working, because you can, um, Katie, you can track that, you know, a little bit to tell what state it would cost you. Instead of taking, you know, all the money at the general fund, boom, and buy the vehicle.
If you, if we release them down, like, and rent for this specific, I mean, number one, what have we done this, this past year? Maybe what, three times, four times, I mean, he's scoring rent for the day and be done with that. No insurance.
Yeah, the rent, the rent thing is for a day.
Yeah, it's more like these group trips that they're talking about, but the lease stuff for social services, I think would, uh, probably be the way to go.
I think the last couple used it for, for Baker. And then, um, Mr. Vaughn involved, and we'll probably be using for the L R A trip to pile the volume to, to more people.
So it ain't that free? The van must be in bad shape.
It tells you smoke up, oil changing pit when you come out of. Miss Simmons got a spray in her burp, you gotta wear that thing.
All right, keeping on, going down the list here, some other things that are, that are captured in here. Well, legal fees, um, that's like a quarter of a million dollars, thanks. And that would be under the general financial administration, okay? And then, uh, reassessment, of course, that only happens, uh, you know, every six years, or at least that's the schedule that you're, or that's the, the maximum length you can go out. Uh, that's a hundred and twenty thousand for next year, and that, Miss Toner, is under administration. Put the reassessment.
Yes.
No problem, no problem, all right, um, Commonwealth's attorney's personnel, that's about a hundred and ten thousand. And that obviously is under Commonwealth's attorney. The fifth school, what did you?
Is that the additional personnel?
Yes, that's the additional personnel.
And that's two, correct? Admin and, and attorney.
Is, is legal fees on this sheet?
Legal fees are right, or under general and financial administration. You'll, you'll.
No, no, okay.
Yeah, your detailed document is, is the.
I got you, yeah.
And the legal fees, does he go back to that? How much were budgeted last year?
A hundred thousand. We have got to figure out when to bring them down, if this, this system's only on by that one. But as long as people keep taking me to court, I don't know what else, I can't figure, I can't figure it out. So what do we have, what up this year, two?
Two hundred and fifty thousand. I, I just, I have to, you know, I, I had, I should have pulled it out, I don't have full vote, because that's like very different, that's just ridiculous.
That's quarter million dollars.
It's her. And, and Mr. Vaughn, to your, to your point, this, for informational purposes, and I, I understand, I get it, believe me, I get it. They're also working on enforcement issues, uh, so, um, it's not just something, you know, being taken to court. It's also trying to take people to court and get them to do what would be a lot easier if they would just, just do.
Couldn't we use the department heads to take people to court? Couldn't we use the department heads to take people to court?
They can do the the filings and everything that's required.
Oh, anybody got any comment on that in my own?
We have to have a good law.
Right. Well, I think one thing that I I think uh, I always say, you know, you know, I need to know what we got, and you know, just looking at that. I sure would like to see when we're calling, I mean, I'm not, I'm not contacting the lawyer for two hundred fifty thousand worth of stuff, but it may be out there, you know, I don't, I I gotta figure that out. So what I've asked Mr. Costas to do, I mean, it needs to be transparent now. We need to figure out how we can say, hey, this, and I know we gotta be careful, because you can't put, it is something to do with personnel, you can't put it up there, but you can say personnel. What's the date? Three thirteen, three thirteen, Mr. Bowlen. Sands Anderson, phone call, fifty minutes. And and price day.
Break it down themselves.
Do they invoice us break it out like that?
To an extent, yes.
And I've spoken with Mr. uh, Ben Roberts, and he will, uh, he's going to do the next invoice with more detail to see if that's satisfactory. But he has uh, given us the opinion, um, too much detail could to, you know, opposition can, whoever the opposition might be, for whatever purpose.
I mean, anybody got any suggestions? I mean, I, um, uh, I, okay, so um, and 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 we're not, we're not gonna get bogged down tonight, because this is probably a work session type topic. But one of the reasons why that we didn't even take a look at um, as as our new county administrator, Ms. Vivian, is, and she was a lawyer, is because she was, I don't think she would took anything under two hundred thousand dollars. But now we're in high county administrator, our legal fees is one two hundred fifty thousand. That's what, that's bad business, you know? I mean, I'm just being honest with you. I mean, we had, we had some serious conversations about that. All right, well, we can't, anyway, all right. So already, one board member had already said, he, you know, and I hear you, and take, and and I hear you too, Miss Simmons, we gotta have a lawyer.
And a good lawyer.
Right, and a good one.
Yeah, and oh, and I don't disagree with Miss Simmons, I mean, we we need a good lawyer, but we gotta find a way to change how like we're being spent. I mean, that's just.
Gotta be something, man.
Yeah.
All right. All right, sorry about that, Mr. Costas, but that's the stuff that we gotta.
Yeah, well, this is, I mean, these are things I have on the list, so.
And 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 we gotta be, no budget reasons, we can't say, all right, Sands Anderson, you gonna represent us till you get a hundred thousand, so then you just drop us. I don't know, that's what's messed up, you know, I mean, it's like, right, anyway, all right.
Okay, all right. Uh, I think I left off with the Commonwealth Attorney Personnel. Next one would be, there's the fifth uh, school resource officer, and that's gonna show up under law enforcement. Uh, we've got two hazardous mitigation grants built into the uh, into the budget. The first, it's kind of simple, it's basically putting some hurricane shutters on these two windows. The second is a little bit larger uh, project, it's sirens, Public Safety Warning System uh, throughout the entire county. VDM has those under review. There was a third, uh, that was for a generator here, uh, but it was denied. Uh, so those two uh, grants, and what that, the number reflects is fifty two thousand dollars, what that number reflects would be our match on the system, uh, or or the project.
I'm sorry, I'm being a little slow on the take. Can we go back? How much was this additional school resource officer?
A hundred and ten thousand.
For one resource?
Salary fringes and to outfit them.
Okay.
Cars.
And that's to get another one. What what schools do we, y'all know what schools we got covered now?
This is the fifth one, so I was under the impression this was, this covered them all?
They're not applying for money for this one?
Yes, we we do have grant funding. This is the last year, fiscal year twenty four will be the last year of funding from the original two, so we will completely have to pick those up.
All right, but what I'm saying is the one ten, or what is, because he said for the fifth off, so what I'm saying is, are they applying for a grant for the fifth off?
Yes, we have grant funding approved for the three new, to include this last one, so there will be some offset to that money, yes.
Okay.
Do we know what the offsets want to be now?
And pull out the grid for them.
Yeah, I think if they see you need money for grants, then once you get it up, get it started, then they stop.
So um, grant funding is gonna run out for the original two, are we gonna have it through this kind of fiscal year? So this is a hundred and ten is sold to the new. And then, I'm sorry, that's where we got off the resource office, and then you went to.
Oh, the hazardous mitigation grants? Those would be under your public safety as well. And that's two grants, and our match would be fifty two thousand dollars.
Per.
Total.
All right. All right.
And you said that included, you said something about shutters?
Yeah, it's hurricane shutters on these two windows here, the E S A to harden that, to harden that up, and then uh, a siren system, a public safety warning system.
Yes, really.
So it's uh, not just these two, but you're correct, but it's the entire sheriff's department.
Oh, okay.
Probably about eighteen.
I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
We're gonna encapsulate for hurricane protection, these two windows will encapsulate this room, and then there's the entire sheriff's department dispatch center will be encapsulated.
I guess that could invest, we've got in all that.
Yeah, yeah, very, some ways they're bulletproof, man.
They are, they're all steel windows, hurricane proof, and then of course, as you mentioned, the siren system is for all towns, sirens across the county, all of the.
You you mentioned that. I forgot, thank you, Guy, I forgot about the sheriff's office, um, being part of that. Okay, um, moving on, there's an additional fifty five thousand four hundred dollars as a cumulative increase for fire and rescue.
You get that number public safety as well? Fifty five four?
Fifty five four. Then these are increases, so if you're looking for that number, you won't see that number, but if you compare it to last year's number, that's how the math works.
And that's still not cutting what they're gonna find, is that any close yet?
When we say cumulative increase, you're talking about across the whole of all of them?
Okay, um, there is, as part of our membership in the juvenile detention center, uh, forty one thousand dollars towards renovation there, uh, HVAC and security. That's under public safety as well, the juvenile detention, or is that under?
It's under correction and detention.
Correction, okay, yeah, sorry. Now, here's one where we can probably do some cutting. We have built in two hundred thousand dollars for courthouse complex work. Uh, I think I've mentioned that um, Mr. Heban has started, he's been going around doing his assessment, and his assessment is uh, about the same as Mr. Mr. Hoffman's, uh, there's a lot of work here that needs to be done, um, but I think we can pull that number back. Do the same thing, look at a fire list, and then pull that number back, so.
Well, what what can we do this year for the fiscal year? I mean, do we have enough money to, in other words, we not got some of these projects, is any projects we can get done between year and June thirty?
Yes.
See, that that would cut, I mean, that would be a self cutting, right? You know what I'm saying? I I, I heard, like, you got paint, right, I heard that all night.
Right.
And um, and I even thought about looking at that with the LRA, in other words, if it's maybe something that he can do. I mean, can we transfer, if he, if he don't have enough money in the LRA to do the project, can we print, transfer, I don't think, can we transfer money from another project listed for this year to get to him to get that done? In other words, two different budgets, right?
Is it carryout, yes?
Is it carryout, right?
We've got under maintenance building plans.
Is that two hundred thousand? But you're talking about taking two hundred thousand off of that?
Well, then, not the whole, we we will probably need to have some work out here done, I'm just waiting for him to kind of do the assessment and figure out what that, what that is.
So there's a part, another project list that should be gone.
Right, right, I got you. One other item, um, that we've addressed, based on uh, Ms. Harab's presentation, we do have two thousand dollars in in the budget for steps, for um, their efforts in trying to step in for Madeline's house, and I'm thinking that was going to be under.
I don't know.
You kind of just, you said just two thousand?
Two thousand, just two thousand.
But that would.
Right, and she also says she might, remember, she also says she might like to come back and ask for more.
That's on the what?
All right, um, the next one that I I had on my list to bring to your attention, DSS vehicle, twenty five thousand dollars, I think we've already discussed about wanting to look at some other options. All right, now this one's a uh, we we need to have some discussion here, um, if you haven't, I understand there's some trouble downloading, but my staff report uh, for this past month reports to you that the um, part-time CSA coordinator, uh, who was basically covering to try to get us into, you know, next year's budget. Uh, for family reasons, she has had to resign. So right now, we have no CSA coordinator. The the ideal was to bring forward to you all a proposal to take that position to full time, and right now, it's being colored by DSS staff. And so, we've got two hundred thousand dollars there, and a lot of that has to do not just with the persons, but going part-time to full time, because the cases are increasing. Again, I'll just reference that video that we, the news article that we read just before the meeting started, and I looked at something today on uh, headline on Fox News that uh, more teenage girls are suffering from mental health issues than any time before, so there's a lot of need out there.
It's kind of child services act.
But are you saying the two hundred thousand dollars is for S A?
No.
The two hundred thousand dollars is an increase in mandated services.
But we would like to try to get that position moved from part-time to full time.
And the DSS director has expressed her thoughts that it needs to be as well.
Yep. Will the two hundred thousand incorporate that addition?
Two hundred thousand strictly for the mandated services.
But that's, but those are increases over.
Yeah, I mean, that's leading to the increases, yes.
You're correct, the thing is, this bothers me, and it's just what it is, is we we put money, we put money, and I, and I, and it probably needs to be full time, I mean, we didn't have any, and that was just a disaster. But we put money into this uh, child services act to prevent having resource offices, to prevent for people going to DOC, you understand what I'm saying? So we gotta, we really gotta figure out, we we we're putting money on the back end when it become, we need to put money in the front end.
Yeah, yeah, just like you, you talk about the officers, and then not only that, they're talking about what nine million dollars and fixing fixing up the best of your school. You know, to, I don't know, don't get hit with a grenade or RPG or something.
Right, I get you.
And that's the capital expense that we were kind of waiting for.
But that child services act, that's a moving target, isn't it? And and the goal is the child services act, I mean, not the goal, but the coordinator is to help get them in a, you know, in a place.
To help facilitate the the rates, the services.
Right, the rates, and they try to get, okay, so if you get them in there, they might get paid for the self if they do it, right? Because I looked at that one time, so it was, some places is, I don't, I'm I'm making up numbers, but it was almost like some places is three hundred dollars a day, and other places was twelve hundred dollars a day. It's just unbelievable. Right, right, like, I can't figure that out.
But if you had a kid who needed those services.
Well, you gotta do something, right, right, but you would like for them to still put them somewhere where you know is a good, reputable place, and anyway, because, I mean, you can send somebody with twelve hundred day, twelve hundred dollar day service and still get bad services. You know, I mean, anyway.
This kind of money, you can always build facilities instead of putting them in a house.
Well, I had questioned before, and I don't wanna get bogged down, what if you went regional? You know, why do we, why can't not a way partner up with another county or something? Kind of like we do P. Mon Regional Jail, can we go regional with that? Maybe the coordinator can help us with that, I don't know.
That would be a good idea.
Right, it's like, like you say, build a a a service for that.
Have a facility for it to come from different counties to.
See, you could actually reduce the county's contributions to the thing.
Okay.
And see, and like you said, this is mandated, so, and that's one.
If, if, I I I'm okay with, you know, I hear y'all too, and I think, I think we're all okay, it sounded like that we don't mind funding it, we're not saying, we're not making that tonight, that decision, but but these are the kind of things I would like the coordinator to come and give us some report at a board meeting, say, hey, this is what I'm working on, maybe they can't talk about certain children, but hey, I can look at, let me answer your question, I think we can go regional, or let me reach out to this county. I mean, that would be worth our money in itself, you know, with that.
Probably could get a lot of good information, feedback from this reading.
Right.
In two days, you don't have a fourth.
Right, yeah, what I, does this person work for Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, actually.
It did, yeah.
Well, but actually, the position is under the county administrator, but there was such a close working relationship there with DSS, that's where.
But this would be a way to.
It was. Something in terms of uh, well, for example, destiny works for Sheila.
Yeah, I got you, I got you, I went, I went to that, I followed that um, organization.
Okay.
It's it's eight oh seven, does anybody need to take a break? Y'all wanna get up, stretch your legs?
Okay.
Okay. Show me I take a break? Ten, five minute?
Yeah, let's take five.
All right, let's take five. All right, need a turn for, not a turn, uh.
Reset.
Recession for five minutes. Oh. Feel free to speak, if you kind of want to, we don't break, anybody, you got anything want to say, Mr. uh, something, you, did y'all, did y'all get, did y'all get some information on that?
Y'all talking about weatherization, the venue, the south side do that for free for homeowners, they partnered up with y'all, and you could maybe kind of group a houses to spend that money on.
Well, I I do nothing, I can't figure it, they got one house, one house, one location, because we got a way to write that, just more to it.
Yeah, it it has a whole lot involved in that, and then you go, you pick this house, and you gotta get what your criteria is, I think, they don't agree with that, you you gotta set a criteria, and then somebody says, well, I'm I'm resolved that they are because of extent, which you know, no real position as a legal person.
Here's your pressing board, the project area is really top.
Yeah. Um, Carmen, you talking about vehicle, Carmen, I said a grant program now, I was telling my daughter, and I, y'all give away free cars, you joke, she said, we have a grant program to give cars locality for self-service. I believe in Carmen's favor.
When y'all go to senior, is it like she taking me doing all with. So the school, to local provision, local provision in school, it's a different business, once in the general foundation, once in the school foundation, and twice in the door. She must, it's just a money. It's it's not included in what your technical revenues are, and it offsets in some. It's a dividend and revenue each. So it's a dividend and revenue, general fund, federal revenue, school fund.
They want some criteria that year.
Because I recently got an email about the alternative.
Is there any other signage that we told by looking at Shane?
That is a pile.
Shaker reached out to me and said, have you all thought about Shane? They didn't see that. He said, there's a fund. The F D has a fund that he wants.
All right, let me ask you something.
Yeah. So, what about businesses that might be identifying in some of its letterhead and board business cards? An ABC corporation located in Fort Pigg. Does it apply to them as well? And they're like, oh, we don't know, we gotta get you some information on it. So while they were getting me that information, I asked Shane to go out and just follow up. How many signs have you got?
That would be our response.
Yeah, right.
I might be saying it, because we might not do it.
Yes, we wanted to change, which is, how many signs are we talking about? Now, DOD has four. So, so how does this one run? All the holiday sites. So. Where it says. That sign is kind of dino. Well, the way it used to come from, that sign's coming down. But DOD's. So it was one of those things. The classic thing is that I try, 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 before I bring you on. If you want to do this.
That was like.
He told me he was down his list, where he said. That's what he said. Somebody on my table.
We had to run back, he pushed along. Yeah. All right, we've reconvened, thank you for the short recess and stretch your legs out. And I appreciate some of the public's comments too, while we're talking. All right, go ahead, Mr. Dawson.
Okay. We had a presentation by Mr. Van Orbit from Blackstone about the recreational work being done for elderly gators. The request for fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so this is, this is kind of a two-pronged discussion. One of the things that he talked about was the concession stand and outfitting the concession stand. Over at the LRA, we have a tremendous amount of old, I don't mean old, old. This table came from the LRA folks. All these chairs are sitting in there, everything, okay. Unused, nice but unused equipment, including some kitchen equipment. So, Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Van Orbit are going to buddy up and go out there and take a look at what's out there to see what could be used. So, I would certainly encourage an in-kind contribution of that kitchen equipment since it's sitting there doing enough to collect dust. If they want it, they could have a type thing, okay. So now, as far as the fifty thousand dollars, we have it in the budget. As we said, we didn't cut anything that anybody asked for. But it's also, you all asked me to put it on the ARPA list, which I have done. Now, also, on the ARPA list, I've reached out to Crew concerning the library. And that was initially the library, the roof of the library. It's now the roof and some HVAC. And also, I've reached out to Burkeville regarding the utility lines. And had exchanged with Mayor Welch, and he's, he's going to get me some, some numbers, okay? So, I really haven't, other than a couple of emails and phone conversations, I haven't really been able to do much to update that ARPA list. But you could, when you're talking about doing things. Mr. Chairman, a minute ago, you said, is there something we can do this year? If you all wanted to, you could contribute towards the gators using your ARPA fund. Now, this Tomer has reached out to make sure that that's a legitimate expense under the ARPA rules. And everything that we can find and read basically says if it's brick and mortar, it's good to go.
So they got a project going on down there. Then if it's not, we could dedicate to that, and then free up another pit somewhere else.
Oh, that would.
Recreation.
Recreation.
Well, that's what I, recreation called transportation. And that's what I meant, maybe I didn't ask the question right. I was trying to say, is, is, is the ARPA funds, any ARPA funds written in the expenditures, but we didn't show it in the general fund estimate?
I included the town's request because we wanted an all-inclusive look for you all. But as far as it being added to the ARPA list, if that is the case, and we choose to do that, we'll just take that.
I got you, you did that case, we didn't.
Do we normally have something in the budget for all of the rec associations?
So that's, that's actually something that you all need to talk about. It's always been two thousand per town. And there's been concerns that that isn't utilized the same in parts of the county as it is in other parts. And that the recreation association had concerns that they didn't feel like they benefited. That's.
Well, some of the towns, it was passed through, and some of the towns it wasn't defined. I'm gonna leave that there.
Well, we gave it to the towns, the towns I ride along, we gave it to the towns. And like, okay, so we know, like, I'm just going to use town of Burkeville, let me just say what I represent. We gave it to the towns to help, you know, it really didn't go to the, it may not have went to the rec association. It may went to pay for the lights so people, kids can play soccer till midnight and be off the streets. You know, that was part of the whole deal. So we really got, we got two issues. We, we got the rec association, is what I feel like the rec association, that's, that's, that's soccer, da-da-da-da-da. But then, if you, but then, so the rec association goes to the town of Crew and say, hey, I want to use, they don't go look.
No.
They refuse to accept.
Yeah, okay, they accept by Steve Ball, they go to Burke, and they say, I want to play soccer there. And they say, okay, so they got the money for that, but the Burke was not getting any money to leave the lights on while the rec association that we're supporting to, to, are you kind of, okay.
That's the reason why I asked you if y'all would consider re-establishing the park and rec from not a weekend. Doing a committee for park and rec.
I think you mentioned that back in nineteen something.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right. All right, so, all right, but now, let's do CSA first before we do park and rep, okay? Let's take baby steps, y'all, you heard my brain, Mr. Roll. How do we fix that? What, how do we, all right, so, and I'd rather, I'd rather do, I'd rather scrap the discretionary fund for each one of us. And if I had to pick my discretionary, because I've, I've always said, and Mr. Vaughn, you know, as I always said, and Ms. Simmons, we ain't paid enough to rec, okay? But I got to make sure our towns are supported there too, our towns.
Because the rec is who pays to join, but there's still recreation for, for children that needs to be addressed, the children that can't afford it.
That's what bothers me, some people can't afford to see a forty-five dollars or whatever it is, and that's not right, anyway.
So did I understand a little bit ago, the discretionary, the board discretionary fund that we've had, it's been a hundred thousand. What do we take it for, how much do we actually kind of expenditures?
It's varied from year to year. This year, you haven't spent a great deal of it. In past years, it's been, I know I said you, the county hasn't spent a great deal of it. Saw that look. It's been as much as three hundred thousand in the past.
I just don't remember getting into it deep at all, since I've been here, just twenty.
Years.
Geez. So, and we have this other system that we, we need to think about. So we have a system of, you know, at the end of the year, we say, keep the money, keep the money, damn, if I'm wrong. Then we start giving people money towards the end of the fiscal year. When is softball and baseball season starting? Right, so they didn't already sign up, they didn't already, they, they don't, they should have had that money back in January. You know, when I was, you know, I mean, they're saying, but, I mean, we can change the culture here. You know, you mentioned L A, EDC, we need a culture change here, so. But how do we, but, so, okay, so, all right, so, can we all agree that two thousand is not enough?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. And that only goes to towns, that don't, that don't go to the rec association, or did we change that last year? We changed it.
We need to change the culture there.
Okay, that's what we need to consider now. To continue the two thousand dollars for the towns with the lights maybe, but then give the rec association. But see, the gators is not part of the rec association. Separatant, you with me? Okay, that's right, that's when it gets complicated. All right, and then, what if somebody says, then that's what, I think that's what Mr., you know, he, he makes his points, but in a way that I can't stand. What he's getting to, I think, I think, I think is what he's getting to is, if you had a coordinator, you give it to the coordinator's budget, and then they help each other.
Right, right, that's what he's trying to do.
But you're talking about potter preparation, you're talking about it going from volunteer to paid, basically. You're setting up a new agency.
And it would be.
And, and with that, do we want to set up a new agency? Do we want to change the culture from volunteer to, to paid?
I think you could try, to your point, I don't think we could try a committee first and see what, what that generates, and then, like.
What's going to happen to your volunteers then?
Well, what I'm saying, for the county, that's just county, and the county is talking to the other bodies. And then, you're looking at the Haverest Trail that shouldn't have been completed twenty years ago. That would also make you park the rec committee.
And the volunteers wouldn't have to necessarily be excluded from the committee.
That's right. They'd be barred up, that give them what doesn't need to be a part of the committee.
All right, so we got a process, but I think what we got to go, not tonight, but we got to sit back and say, okay, what are we going to budget for? I guess the emergency coordinator, he can't do park and rep too, can he?
Did I say that in Latin? I'm sorry. We can't even hurt him because we have all these.
That would be very influential overall on economic development.
No, I, I think what we could think about though, not maybe that, but we could think about, isn't someone out there to get, to dip a toe in it? It's to stipend somebody's pay to be the.
I'd do it for free. I'd do it for dog.
All right, let me, all right, we got a budget. All right, so, look, I think of what I'm hearing from our assistant county administrator, Demond Wright. We got, what are we going to do about getting to the rec? Okay, so the magic question is, gators is not only rec, okay? So when you give, so, maybe.
How many directions do you have?
It was two, it was two, I heard that.
The gators is a separate.
So you could say two, the gators and the association.
I think for this first year, I think that it would be happy with the ARPA funds from the school board and stuff.
You do what I can help the gators out, and then, don't let that bog up down.
That's right, and then you look at your two thousand, but your town's like, I think the only question you may have is, how much do we want to give directly? And can we give directly to the rec association, yeah? So then if the towns decide they want to give their two thousand to the rec as well, then so be it.
Yeah, I think we need to find out, can we get to the rec association?
We can.
Directly, okay.
It's all that, three budget cycles ago, by the turn.
Y'all think about five, four, five thousand is all we can.
Only two on that one. It's, it can, it just, it would help with decision-making. Can someone reach out to the president of the rec association and tell them what their budget is?
To come down meeting.
Masha, Masha.
Yeah, right. But just reach out and see what the budget is, that would help with decision-making.
Can I go back to Senator Ross Chaklin's question? Reference to the board discretionary fund, one of the largest expenses that comes out of that is the delinquent tax collection efforts. It's always come out of that line. I actually have that set for me at this time, so that won't come out of that, it'll come out of its own line. Having said that, that gives you the opportunity, if you want to consider cutting that back some, you certainly can. But the perfect example of what you would do with that is if Ms. Harab comes back and she's successful in her efforts on the domestic violence shelter, and she asks you for funding, you'd be able to take it out of there.
Can you remember the years when it's been three hundred thousand?
It's been similar type thing, someone coming in and asking, yeah. And I could go back to three years and tell you.
And we've been very fortunate in this county, and I'll say this, because I want to use some examples, Mr. James Wilferson Tire. When I first got on the board, he did tell me, he goes, Steve, y'all don't give enough to rec association. And, you know, and that's been a passion of his, and he's mentioned that to me not once, but a couple times. And I had to agree with him, so, we need to, you know, but we're fortunate enough that we have people that's in the community that donates money to these associations. But really, it's our responsibility on something, on these things like that, you know?
Wouldn't it might be answering right there, instead of creating a little line item for them, why don't we just give them something a hundred thousand dollars on discretionary fund? That's going to be left at a hundred thousand, even fifty thousand, whatever it is.
No, no, he's talking about keeping the seventy, they're giving the two thousand. This year, this year. But we, but how much did y'all talk about?
We didn't say.
Oh, we didn't say that, okay, just, but, I see what you're saying, so they have something this year, instead of waiting for next year's budget? That's what you're saying. If we had to. No, no.
And if something needs to be in place for the future.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simmons.
So, Ms. Simmons, we have looked up, so, a hundred thousand, she's keeping, that's, that's in there, that's still a hundred thousand in there. But the additional, then the separate line item, the new line item of seventy-five thousand is, seventy-five hundred, I'm sorry. To, to start, so, you know, round figures, no, okay. So, you could drop something, you could drop your, you could drop your discretionary fund to fifty, and you've got forty that you could. Do twenty, twenty this year as far. It's up to y'all.
I think you see that budget. I can see your budget. Anyway, if they were sharing that with us, and with intent, it's not getting into their business, but to assist them anyway, so to keep. And here's my.
But what we do shouldn't, they go out and raise money, Steve, a lot of the business people contribute. That shouldn't have anything to do with what we do.
I don't think we should, we need to see that budget.
Well, yeah, how you going to come on, so y'all telling me, no, so how many children, so do we know how many children this year that could pay there? We don't have that number.
We don't know, I mean, the parents may not have even taken them, I mean, to sign them, they didn't have the money.
We won't have one on that number.
No.
So we'll give them, give them number then.
Well, how about this, how about our, our additional contribution is to offset the cost of their sign-up fees?
I thought about it too, like, in other words, if they set the sign-up fees with fifty dollars, and they get two hundred kids, that's what we get for them.
Yeah, so, I mean, are we talking about something that would drop it down to forty dollars, thirty dollars? You see what I'm saying, nagging, all of a sudden, we're putting more children in that place.
Because there's no way to figure out what children.
Is it?
Are not signed, not because they don't have the money.
You got people who sponsor charities.
Right, you can't, so it's no way.
Why don't we, why don't we just say, give the rec association, we go from the two, for the towns, to ten dollars each, which, I mean, ten thousand each, which would be thirty thousand. That would be a sizable increase from what we have been doing.
Out of the discretionary fund?
You can go more.
Yeah, out of the discretionary fund, because that's all we're budget for.
Yeah. That's what.
You know what, if y'all want that money while Mr. Vaughn's talking.
Okay.
But the, but, but the rec is one, and one now, so we're talking about the rec and the gators.
The rec would get, the rec would get thirty thousand, the gators would get. Sit down and do football, and they also do.
I guess what I want, and I hear you, what I'm trying to, what I want this board to be thinking about. We don't, we're alive right now, okay? So, there's enough mathematical chiefs in this county, chief fireman, I know one down in Burkeville right now. He can figure out pretty quick the percentage increase we gave to rec, and tell us the percentage that we haven't been giving to. That, I, so, I'm just letting you be ready, why you want to come up with a number? That's what I'm telling, Jerry. That's the, I, I, it's more, it's more than just saying, ah, let's throw this money at it. We got to make an informative, I feel like, decision that's fair for full-time, even though we, I don't care if Katie says, well, you know what, y'all got two hundred thousand dollars in discretionary fund, and we need to make sure some of that goes in the right spots.
Right.
And that's the only, that's the only reason I'm doing, I'm trying to figure out how we do this thing fairly, and, and give out, because we got, we. And that's always, that's the only reason I'm doing, I'm trying to figure out how we do this thing fairly, and, um, and give out, because we got, we got emergency services sudden out there, it is more than, and I know it's on a different line item, but we really gotta be thinking about that increase. And I know they need it, I'm not asking.
Who's going to your point, do you think we should maybe ask them in the last three years to see how their account has grown? Children's numbers and account?
I don't know what the fair question is.
Well, you, you have to think that, you have to think about, COVID hit, and kids didn't play ball for a while.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So then they had to start all over.
They did shut down, didn't they?
Yeah, they had to start all over.
It's a mess. Oh, and I don't know, okay, so, I, I. Okay, well, ask the question, maybe, ask the president, first question, how can we help? That'd be a fair question, alright. The fire department already told us how they can help, they gave us the numbers, so let's say, how can we help? Would that be a fair, okay, and then we'll come up with a number. I think, Mr. Casse, what we like to do is pay as much as we can this year, and get, get as much done this year with, with capital I L A, or whatever we can do, or projects, um, and, you know, and then, that would help us with the budget next year, if we, if we're looking, you know, if we're not such a shortfall. Fair enough? Alright, alright, keep rolling.
Alright, we only got a couple more, and then, you know, we're gonna discuss anything else, that's right. Um, in the budget, we also have an additional eleven thousand dollars from three new non-governmental organizations asking for money in this October.
They're new, and essentially, we didn't fund them last year, but they have been funded at various times in the past.
And they are.
P, P Monary Development Council, Part of Virginia Free Clinic, P Fumble, and P Mont, Hep T A.
And we did it last year, right?
No.
No, that's a new stuff.
But the year prior.
I did, I guess.
What was the first two again, P Mont Area?
Veterans Council, the Heart of Virginia Free Clinic, and Hep T A.
Is there funding for all three of those acquired year prior?
In next year, so next year.
But not consistently, they, 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 sometimes they come in and they ask, and sometimes they don't.
I don't think, let me take that back, I don't think the Free Clinic has ever been funded.
I think you're right, I think we talked about that in, in, anyway, and it said, that is actually located in Farm.
Yes.
But, but I do know that, she said, not a way does, not a way citizens use that.
And forty-seven thousand under the capital.
Non-governmental organizations.
Don't have a test for humanity, they, they don't invite someone to work with them, for a project, too?
I think so.
But you said they're involved with this one?
Heart of Virginia Free Clinic, isn't it?
The Free Clinic.
Oh, okay.
Alright, alright, okay. I might have said it wrong.
I think so, that's what their whole message is.
Mr. Doug. Okay.
Um, the, the last item that we kind of pulled out, just to kind of highlight, to discuss with you all, is, um, fifty thousand dollars, um, for economic development marketing, which would appear under general and financial administration. I'm sorry. Plenty, I'm sorry, further down the bottom, okay, plenty, so that's a fifty thousand dollar increase. Um, so, and that's been discussed at the, the one meeting of the newly reforming Economic Development Committee. So, um, that's the one meal.
I'm sorry, before we jump off of that one, I, I thought part of the discussion was, because you're talking about fifty thousand, wouldn't that be the same as the money we're talking about pulling off the L R A?
Well, yeah, so, I guess what he's saying, we, and then we, we, I think we had conversations about this in the E D C, and it may have been side conversation. What, what, the, the purpose of the L R A, Chairman, you were there, and then, the purpose of the L R A is the, is so we could use for economic development. It was given to us to offset the loss of economic development.
Right.
Offset, okay, and in two thousand twelve, we couldn't spend any money in two thousand twelve, so I think what we were hoping is that the L R A would help fund economic development. Did I say that right, Mr. Vaughn, did I say that right? Um, but the problem in reality is, we gotta put money back into the L R A for maintenance, and, or we gotta come up with the fees, so, so you're putting fifty thousand dollars in right now just to, uh, to resurrect the E D C? So we have some type of budget?
Something, something.
He could start working with, um, and yes, we could cover it out of the L R A, um, funds that, that we.
Yeah, later on, once we get, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I think, I think to prioritize, we need to fix that place up.
Yeah, I get you, I know, I get you, I, I see what you're saying, but eventually, I like to get there from here.
Right.
Cause that is the purpose of the L R, I mean, is, that's why we get to, with the, to offset the economic loss that we had. And then, and then we give it a golden cow, fast seagulls out there, we need to be, we, we need to utilize that somehow.
They closed the base, they had the base closure, and this is when they awarded us this money. I mean.
Nineteen ninety-seven or something.
Thirty-six hundred acres, I mean, thirty-six, three thousand six hundred acres. We gave twelve hundred to the Genetech, and the other we have been selling, the, the, so, the land to fast sea.
And bowling alley.
The bowling alley.
And, and you, you've donated some to the Southside Virginia Community College, uh, for their efforts.
Right.
Mountain School, Troy Brown School.
Right. Go ahead, Mr. Chaklin, you wanna add something?
Well, I, I have a question, and I really don't know the answer, but if, if fifty thousand for marketing, we have, we have the last meeting about economic development, is, is marketing gonna bring the results, or is investing in something else gonna, I mean, what are we, what are we gonna market?
That, that, that's the question I'm asking, is, until we fix it up.
Right.
So it looks nice and it's attractive, we might be ahead of ourselves.
So, but it's attractive.
This is it.
I think what she's talking about, throw fifty thousand in marketing for the, for this, what we're giving this, are we gonna advertise, hey, we got the E D C now? We're eighty-four, fifty thousand dollars, ain't that?
I think it's kind of the science, you're on the cameras, measure your return on your investments, I don't know if that's the best way for us to spend fifty thousand right now.
Steve, keep in mind that the Officers Club is also a museum.
Right.
And people do come, and serve, and they are doing, right, worthwhile, too.
Well, what do y'all think if we, um, do we have to call it marketing? The, the E D C needs a budget.
Yeah.
So it says, the type, the type local, um, planning and community wealth, so what if, what if somebody on the outside, like in Burke, says, hey, hey, Steve, this is a nice place to buy, for y'all to get for industrial park, we're gonna need a budget to get that money to, to buy that.
See, I thought that's what you want to do with, be like approximately five hundred thousand dollars, I mean, you got over five million sitting in the L R A. We got plenty of money out there to do the repairs, and also pull down from the E D C.
The, 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 I, I'm trying to remember, um, Katie, if you help me out here, how, when we sold that land out there for fast sea, was it four point something million, or was it five million?
Four point.
Four point seven, I believe.
Okay, but that is what, back in the general fund?
No, that is the L R A lanes, uh, one, by itself.
We, we made an agreement, the board at that time made an agreement, that we would not spend that money, we would only use the interest money.
But that was going into the general fund and not the L R.
Right, alright, so how much interest, oh.
There you go, that's why.
So how much interest was, re, re, you know how much interest we got, the close interest rates of tire? Before they downblown, so how, you know how much we got?
Well, we have budgeted currently a hundred million for the L R A lanes, uh, one.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Interest, yes.
Well, hopefully most.
Nine, what?
Thousand, thousand.
So the interest at four and a half million dollars is ninety, hundred?
Five, five.
So, so, so what I'm getting at is, that ought to, that, that, forget about the rental business, what you're talking about, I'm worried about the small P's.
And, can we go back to where we started?
Okay.
Okay, where we started, after the school, we talked about, there's your ninety-five thousand.
Okay.
Right there. That's revenue. That's your interest off of what's your settlement.
And that's fun into L R A.
But, 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 it, it hit now, uh, with, remember we kind of tried to separate a little bit, the, last year with the budget, that the L R A was a separate entity from the, from the board, okay? That's where it was getting, that's where it was getting commingled, is you had the L R A pot of money sitting there, earning interest, going into the general fund, while the L R A properties deteriorate.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, I'm not gonna pass that.
No, no, no.
So, but that's what was, what was, you know, and speaking with Davenport today, remember I said, if we do some investing differently than what we've been doing, okay, that ninety-five thousand could be about a hundred eighty thousand.
So, but, if, we still have that five million L R A, so, would that be a logical place to go to and pull for these all these projects up?
Absolutely.
Rather than.
Now, of course, when you do that, you're bringing down the principal, so you're sort of impacting your interest, but, yes, you're getting to something that, you get the place fixed up, and now you got something to market.
So what, what, so, okay, people who understand money, but not Steve Vaughn. So, you were thinking, don't put in fifty thousand dollars for that, utilize that money for your E D C and fix enough things to enter, the interest on the money.
Well, just, that question was, do you really wanna designate it as marketing money? I'm not saying we shouldn't put it to the E D C, but maybe marketing is not the best use of.
I, 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 right, 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 why market some, why market some, and you don't even know what you have yet?
Right, literally was just using a general fund account.
Yeah, she was.
Whatever you all wanted to be.
Wha, wha, why don't we ask them to leave, just, so you know what we're going wrong, okay? And this one, this is very painful to say that I'm going wrong sometimes. So, what we're going wrong is, when we meet with the L R A, we need to be talking about, not just, you know, hey, this rental needs to be this, y'all want to re, re-lease that, that should be all wrapped up in one vote, because once we get the leases set, boom, da, 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 y'all wanna do this, yeah, I approve, we do that, okay, the L R A. Now, we need to talk about, how much interest do we get, where are we putting that money at, what are we, what do we wanna make sure the E D C has?
Sounds like you're saying with the L R A needs to work.
By itself, yeah, instead of trying to get it done in thirty minutes. Maybe, but that's, we got a budget first, and, don't get, don't get, don't get disgusted with us.
No, 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 hey, most of my nights are free.
But, but I think we leave the fifty thousand right now, I don't know, y'all, I'm, I'm sorry, Ted.
But that's coming out the general fund, right? And that's what I'm talking about, if, if we're gonna pull for the economic development.
Pull out the L R A, but that, what he's saying is, it's, it's.
It'd be broadly used and just more.
And it's gonna change the interest. That's it, cause you.
As, as you bring down your, 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 your savings, to get some of the physical work done there, that, yes, is gonna bring down the principal that you collectively, so the interest will come, I mean, the interest, but you're still, you're still making close to a hundred thousand right now.
Well, what I'm saying, that's the same, if you're bringing your principal down from the general fund as well, so you're bringing your principal down either way, whether it's coming out of the general fund or the L R A, is there different rates for one of the other?
Depends on how they're, they're.
They're varying rates depending on where they are.
Depending on.
I guess we're just kept the lower rates, so we make it off, you know, which money should come from? One has a low rate.
But, but you're, but the idea of that, a work session on the L R A, and looking at some financing options, and the work that has to be done out there, uh, great idea, I think, piece of that warm-up meeting to that, you know, for that purpose, would be the tool to go out there and see.
And just, just so we know for that, if, if that's what we need to do, I think, I don't, I don't think we can keep setting stagnant, because obviously, what we're doing with the L R A is absolutely gonna affect what we're gonna do to E D C and the vote.
But they come in handy.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I mean, I think we need to, I mean, I know it's another meeting, but, by God, I think we need to set that up.
I guess when I was, when I'm looking back at this part of the budget, the L R A expenditures, you see, of the three hundred ninety-two thousand, the revenue, that's why I was thinking, if we got that money sitting there earmarked L R A, rather than having to try and figure out how to get this thing to balance, just pull some of that and get the work done and do it.
I mean, we need to put it to use anyone.
Yeah.
Oh, and that just takes care of all the other decisions we're making, okay? And, and leave the, an alternative, right, and leave the fifty thousand dollars until we have the work session, I mean, we gotta put, I do love the idea, at least we're showing some idea, we, fifty thousand dollars, they will cut it, I, I figured that out.
And this is for the next budget, though, right?
Right, so we got time.
See that, did you?
That's right, so, so, I got you, okay, alright.
As long as you don't touch the principal.
Well, that's what we're just.
That's what we're talking about.
Running, we was having a sit here, we're trying to figure out how to balance, so we, we need to have that money for that, like, to block the one.
Alright, so.
Yeah, we're not gonna, I, I don't think the goal is to, to get it all weighed down, we'll, we'll discuss that, Mr. Vaughn, that's a good point.
Alright, so, um, I think I'm right to discuss the R level, so basically, what, um, we're, we're looking, Mr. Tomer and I are looking for, and the staff's looking for is, have you, you have any, um, had a proceed, um, and let me, let me say this, on the revenue side, we have not proposed any, um, well, we do, one other thing we need to go over, uh, we have not proposed any fee increases, anywhere from turkey shoot to landfill to building permits, to zoning, nothing, no fee increases have been proposed.
Stop right there, because we were gonna increase the courthouse security fee, and we have to do that by means of a resolution, I mean, in an ordinance, and then at this time.
That's, that is one, that is the one, one exception, and that's required, that's, that's required, that one, that's a new mandate that came down. But one of the other questions y'all had from, I think, the last work session, was the salaries, so I'm gonna let Mr. Tomer talk about this.
So, Mr. Chaklin, we wanted a comparison, a scrunchy comparison of what was being proposed.
Yes.
As to the five percent that the comp were, were seeing, and the potential seven percent that V S S could have seen. So, the proposed column is what our budget is currently based on.
Okay.
Um, and that's, that's actual departmental level, not just salary totals.
Okay.
Um, the five percent column, so, so, let me take it straight here, what Mr. Carson has done is, our ranges are from zero to three percent, the constitutional officers are five percent, and D S S is currently budgeted at five percent as well. So that first proposed column is inclusive of all of those, those figures right there, five percent, the changes are to the county positions, of the, the direct supervision of county administration. And then, all changes for the department budgets that have a salary line is what the difference is for the seven percent. I know it's a little common.
Right, no, no, I think I'm getting there.
And it only affects these three funds, which is why you only have the L R A, the landfill, and the general fund. So the bottom line is, each fund, those yellow blocks, if you stick with what's proposed, you've got the figure, if you wanna go across the board at five percent, you've got the difference in each fund, if you wanna go across the board at seven percent, you've got a difference as well.
Alright, I gotta admit, I'm just totally standing around an egg against the wall here, trying to figure this out. Proposed is two eighty-four, this, this board survives, two eighty-four, and with the five percent, it's still two eighty-four.
Correct, there's no salary in, in the board. There's only the, the amount that you all get, five thousand or six thousand, there's no salary positions in that department budget. So if you look at county administration, what we, what is proposed is the seven sixty-two, now thirty-nine, and that's at the range from zero to three percent. If we take that to across the board, five percent.
Look, let's, and again, let me refresh, because somebody, some people may not understand, the zero to three is based on a project list that the board saw at the beginning of last fiscal year by personnel, and it's like, okay, these are basically projects, accomplishments that we'd like to see done in, in the course of the next year, okay? So we're, we're in the process, that zero to three is, has somebody made progress, is it reasonable progress, uh, maybe that's a two. Have they completed the project, uh, maybe that's a three, okay? So that's where the range comes from, not everybody is hitting zero, or one, or two, or three. It's based on their accomplishments, if you will, their performance, so that's where that comes from, so that's your base. It's based on their accomplishments, if you will, their performance, so that's where that comes from, so that's your base.
Okay, well, like, the board supervisors is twenty-six thousand dollars, why, two hundred eighty-four thousand in it?
It's the total budget, the departmental budget total. It's not just the wage line, it's the entire budget total.
So what else is included in four hundred and fifty-five, is that what the compensation?
Yeah, a few lines.
Oh, and that's all broken down here?
No, it's broken down in the long report, that's three hundred and something pages. Um, this is, that, what you have right there is seventeen pages and twenty-one page, I believe, abbreviated revenue and expenditures. I can send you all the electronic version of the long revenue and long expenditure reports.
And that would show Frank John.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, cause basically, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get that, y'all get that, oh, I'm.
That's what I'm saying.
I can certainly take this back, redo it, do just the way you just ordered.
No, no, no.
I was just trying to give you a comparison that, that you were asking for.
Okay, but it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm really still confused. All right, because what I'm seeing here is with five percent, the numbers are the same, with seven percent, the numbers are the same, because there's no salary.
There, there's no salaries, so that's, that's where I was going with, with Mr. Carson's change gears, and the county administration line is the perfect example. So everything is proposed at the seven sixty-two, which is the range that he's done everything by. If we go across the board at five percent, that takes the total county administration, departmental budget to the seven sixty-eight.
Well, I get that, I see the difference in that.
And then that's, that's the same to carry across for the seven percent.
Okay, and I see, and that's what I'm saying, but when we add five percent to that, and five percent to this, but what you're saying is over here, because I guess, I guess that's what I'm missing here, because if there is raises at five percent for the commission of revenue, the treasurer, the registrar, how come we're not seeing that difference here?
Because they're already at five percent, so the difference comes in at the seven percent, that's the only difference for them.
But, because they get the state upset.
Correct, what's proposed is the same as five percent.
Okay, all right, yeah, 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 okay.
So let's go back to county administration, so we've got proposed, you said that includes the range that you looked at.
Correct.
But if you just go with straight five percent.
It's across the board with that, that would be your increase in this, in salaries.
In salaries, although this number does not represent just salaries.
No, that's, he wanted the increase in salary, and that's, like I said, if, if it's, if it's convoluted, I can just take it back.
It, it, it hasn't stayed approved to seven percent.
Not that I received, no.
Okay, so right now, you're at a seven percent, in, in other words, uh, let's use a treasurer. In, in, in other words, let's use it as a treasurer, if, if there is, if we give the treasurer a seven percent increase, which, which by the way, we won't have a treasurer, right? Okay, three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
You'll have a treasurer, whoever.
Yeah, well, whoever that.
Takes the interim position.
But, but if, if the state kicks in and says, you know what, we are giving a seven percent, then that, that comes off, that comes off of that. If you let me, that won't, it won't be three thousand.
These differences aren't calculation of these percentages on these numbers, it's only the salaries.
Salaries, yes, it's only the increase on salaries.
We don't really know what that is, of this.
Right, so going to the yellow, which is the, start, that's where you get your math. I think what I'm seeing is, if we give everybody five percent across the board, because the state gave everybody five percent across the board, then the total extra would be fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars coming at our budget. Did I say that right?
Yes, yes.
If we get seven percent, when the state really don't do it, it'll be a hundred and three thousand nine hundred and three.
Because then you're taking almost every budget.
Every budget.
That has salaries included.
Because government.
To seven percent.
Correct, like the first thing you said, the fifteen thousand, where'd you see that?
Page three of that.
With five percent?
Oh, she took all of the friends.
Oh, I see that one, okay, is that what that's fifteen thousand?
Right, yeah, it's fifteen thousand there, and then like she said, it would be seven percent.
Huge, John.
Yeah, it's a big difference, because the state's paying.
The five percent.
The five percent, that's right.
The seven percent, it's not, all right.
And Mr. Carson, I gotta ask, make sure we're right, but that, that, you, you own the contract, so that's a different agreement, right, correct?
Well, and, and, and Chief and Katie, I'm sorry, I apologize, the, when I was looking at the proposed, I was, I was assuming this is what we're actually paying compared to the difference in the five percent.
No, it's obvious I should have done this differently, and I can redo that instantly. I was just trying to do it, total budget, when I see that, if we just bring it into the salary lines, that would have been more clear.
This is all we got.
Okay, that's, that goes back to what skinny budget means.
Yes.
A little bit, with, with, with that budget, we, we got the skinny budget, bro. And I say, oh, okay, so it's two, we're, we're coming up on two hours, eight fifty-four, um, the, the staff is waiting, especially, you know, with the presentation, they had it, they had to tell us what we needed to hear, which was an hour and forty, fifty some minutes, and I appreciate y'all getting that together, I know it took a lot. And, and you gave us things to ponder, so I, I, I know that they're waiting, I mean, they're kind of, they're waiting on us now, and I don't think we'll solve it tonight. Um, so I gotta figure out how are we going to move forward? Um, I, I love it when Ms. Shekelton gets her calculator, that really knows that she's looking stuff out, but I want to hear what you got, I mean, I would want to do.
But, um, Mr. Vaughn, I could, the only questions I have now, right now, and I don't know if you had this, but I'm asking, first, the property rate, real estate rate, and then I want to get some clarification on the loss of seven hundred thousand dollars.
We did a pre-actual of the seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's just where we were in the accounting so far. There's no, there's no changes proposed to either rates.
Okay, no change in any, either of the rates, okay, and you say the seven hundred thou, you saying it's less than seven hundred thousand, or we're, we're still waiting?
There's, there's been revenue collection said, says, yes.
We're still waiting, okay, because, and, and here, here's what confused me, because when we're saying that there was a loss of any, and I remember that citizens still raising hell after three fifteen, it's like, are we talking about the loss was potential revenue? Or actual revenue, because when I hear seven hundred thousand dollars, I, I use John and Matthew, was it twenty million, seven hundred thousand dollars that went to twenty million? That we lost seven hundred thousand, or we only talked.
The seven hundred thousand was uncollected at the time.
All right, so I'm, I made clear, I forgot, cause I may have misunderstood it too, so when, um, like, let's go back. The, the, the reason why we went down, um, on the personal property is to give the citizens a break, and, and my goal was to make sure we gave them a break. If, if, my goal, the first, if, if, if I said I'm gonna give you a break, but yet I still gained three hundred and some thousand dollars in the general fund, I did not want that to happen, you know, I made that, okay, so.
Well, you should have carried it a little lower.
Well, we did, we come back and turned it, turned it lower, then I thought because we went lower, then we went seven hundred thousand in the.
In the red, the red. We had not all the collections, the collections are still coming in, now, collections are running less than, what's it been in the past, ninety-eight?
It was ninety-six, I suspect.
It's been ninety-six, so it's running a little lower in terms of total collection.
Whoa, 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 no proposed tax rate change, that's gonna be inaccurate, EPTR gonna drop again.
That's what the commissioner has given us until she finishes everything.
Look like Neil.
Oh.
We're not talking about moving.
That's, that's all we have to work with, right?
Yeah, so, so.
That's why I said at the beginning this evening, this is still a work in progress, because we're still trying to get some, some.
So, I, I'm going to make sure I make my decision right, so if we'd have left it alone, if we didn't make no changes, cause I mean, the citizens would call me, we probably would have gained seven hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
And perhaps more.
It's a lot later, um, but, um, thank, you, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, thank you, Kristic, I mean, I, I told, I thought, I went to, I was thinking, I didn't, I wasn't thinking that way.
Mr. Vaughn, please think back to last year, and it's on tape, where I said, what was happening with used cars was that the values we're holding are actually going up, and that you would incur a tremendous windfall, you know, if you kept your rates where you were, and then if you wanted to, if you wanted to do that, dedicate that funding stream towards capital projects.
Oh, I, I, okay.
The radio system, because that's public safety issue.
It would have gave us seven hundred thousand more.
Or, or more, to, to push toward that, that system.
But by the time it hit, in order to be revenue neutral, we would have probably had to go below three dollars.
Well, you could have done it two ways, John, possibly, if you're setting lower the rate, then you could also lower the value of those vehicles. From the hundred, from the hundred.
That would have been on the commission.
But, but, but I think, and I hear what you said, Mr. Carson, but I, I, I gotta, I gotta talk about the people who, but, you know. They, they look at it like, hey, don't gain seven hundred thousand dollars, Steve Vaughn, while you've got ten or twelve million dollars in the bank, okay? That's what I was hearing, you know, I've got to say it like it was, and, 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 you know, and I get that. Now, if we, if we do go up, I think the citizens, if I say, hey, you know, one, we don't, we, we still got to have seventeen percent in the bank, I think that's for my budget. I think they recommend, the auditors recommend like seventeen.
So, so the, the base guideline is ten, and we've always been closer.
Okay, okay, so, so I was trying to see, let's do it halfway. I, I, you know, if, if we went up some, and, and the three hundred thousand dollars went towards the payment of the complex, you know, to fix it like it should be, or renovate, or tear a new one down, that'd be, as long as they know, you know, what, you know, and utilizing the, the personal property would have been better than, to me, than real estate. I'm tired of hitting the real estate so hard all the time, because it's, it affects, it really does agriculture, you know, I mean, which is part of our, you know, our, um, our, you know, in a comprehensive plan, it says, you know, try to maintain our agriculture in districts, you know, and that kind of thing.
So, what would the assessment be as far as real estate?
I can only tell you what Mr. Pearson has indicated to the, the group when we get interviewed, and that was, he's seen thirty to fifty percent increases.
And that would impact what fiscal year budget?
That won't affect this, will be the.
Twenty-four, and all of these things that you detailed for us tonight?
It'd be twenty, it'd be twenty-five, because it won't take effect until, the beginning of calendar year twenty-four. So we'll budget during that period, knowing the new figures for twenty-five.
And everything that we've gone through tonight, all these things you've itemized, kind of, that accounts for the two point seven million dollar.
Not a little bit, no.
A large part.
Close to it, it doesn't, it's.
And we're still not even, so we've got to figure what's in this, what we're going to do to try to balance the budget, we still haven't touched capital.
The figure, the figure that I ended up with, with all the individual items that I listed, two million one hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred. So if you were to strike every one of those items, you're still about six hundred thousand dollars out of Kilt City. But you'd have to strike every single one of those items.
And, you know, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, with, with, with y'all maybe there, but as I understand it, the reassessment, you get the one percent if you want, all right? Anything but, you have, beyond that one percent, you have to take it in the tax increase, all right? Um, do we have any idea how many homes we have in our region? Not structured, but residents.
The, the, well, there, there's some, they, they have in their system what they call the class code, and they'll class code, this is really a question for the commission of revenue, we have a power class codes are set up, because they, they might be agricultural under fifty acres, agricultural over fifty acres. Residential, uh, but you could have a resident, but you could have an agricultural class code over fifty acres, and there's a house sitting on it. Which, if we're sitting subdivision, it would be class code number one, so it, it changes. And, and she's actually given me the class code breakdown last year.
Technically, by the, by the personal, and we need to wrap it up, we're going over two hours, but technically, um, but the, the state gave us another tool to tax people higher than besides real estate, but personal property. They, they, they're not saying that, but I mean, that's what I feel like, you know, because if we'd have left it, we would have gained seven hundred thousand more, just if we didn't do anything, we would have gained seven hundred thousand more dollars.
And you'd have heard.
Right, and, and seven hundred thousand dollars, seven cents on real estate.
That's right.
But we were on fifty cents, fifty-seven cents, whatever, y'all, whatever, forty-eight, that was forty-eight, that's right, so we would have went up, yeah, that's right. Anyway, all right. Let's, let's, before we go to comments from members of the board, so the next step is, we got a board meeting Thursday night, um, do we need another budget special session?
Like we need to hear.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to find out what.
Processed.
Tell them, right. Cut here, cut there, they'll cut there, how much you cut.
Right.
Just want to thank you, would, would y'all want to discuss the LRA meeting as well? Cause that's going to affect this one, too.
Yeah, it's tied, it's tied in together, so, and, and the next work session is really April, and that, and that's going to be too late.
So we can, we can, well, we can.
April thirteenth.
Do you want to have a more scheduled for the twenty-third?
Yes.
Well, that's EDC.
The fourth third is EDC. The point, I think, what you're looking for is two, actually two more meetings, one for the budget, and one for the LRA.
You don't think we can do it wrapped in one?
Well, if you like to, but.
Well, we have to have two, don't we have to, you have to advertise for that, for separate.
We should, yeah, to, to, to try to drive home the fact that the authority is different from the board of supervisors, we should.
But that's not the same thing, doing it together.
Yeah.
Just the general one and start the other.
Yeah, I don't want to take anything from EDC, y'all give us some dates, but we need to do it in March, you know, I'm doing, I'm, I'm flexible. The twenty-third, I don't, I, we have got to organize that EDC, because that's something I've told the citizens we're going to do.
Seven is seven o'clock.
Yes, ma'am, seven o'clock.
EDC?
Yeah, on the twenty-third. I regularly, to make sure VDOT is six, on the sixteen, VDOT is at six o'clock, LA, LRA is six thirty, and the board meeting is seven o'clock. March the twenty-third, what time?
Seven.
I see EDC.
Yeah, hopefully we'll organize. The plan was to. No, it'd be a, what do you, what do you have?
Six, on the sixteen, which is our meeting this week.
That's six o'clock for the half of the time.
Y'all want to come back on the morning?
We got, we start at six.
All this stuff is like people's work.
Six o'clock.
We want to do the twenty, then the twenty-seventh, or.
As long as, as long as we advertise tomorrow, we can do twenty.
Okay, the twenty.
If y'all want to do the, you want to do the budget or the LRA on the twenty?
I think, I was hoping we could do it together, cause they come in handy and they handle.
We can, we can, we can.
Let's try to do it together, so we can get, maybe that'd be the twenty-seventh through thirty, we'll get a break a little bit.
So the twentieth?
Twentieth, we're thinking about that.
What time?
You want to do six thirty?
Since we got two, two meetings, one will be six thirty, and one will be seven thirty.
I can, I can do it earlier.
Can you do it early?
Uh-huh.
The twentieth?
The twentieth.
Hey, what you're talking about, what, it's gonna take a little bit long.
Yeah, I got you, so let's do, let's do this.
I'm going to set an hour.
Six o'clock, and then the, for the LRA, which I like to do first, cause that's going to drive it, and then seven o'clock for the regular budget, would that be okay? Six o'clock, chairman, the twentieth.
It was long, I'm gonna, it's gonna be like three hours.
He's just playing with you, dog. I know, but this don't, no, he won't come.
So we do, LRA is six, and then seven, we do the budget.
Right.
All right, and then on the twenty-fourth, Thursday night, you all will decide officially that you're going to have a work session.
Twenty-third or twenty-sixth?
March twenty-third.
Why do you want to do that?
Oh, the twenty-fourth.
You're going to have a work session for the board.
All right, so, so we're going to do a work, so, so, so the Thursday night, we'll decide about the work session on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, but that's not, that's just to look at the LRA, I know it's a work session, but we're not set, we're not probably going to sit down, but.
You have to advertise for it, you're coming.
It does, we do have time to notice that.
It, it doesn't.
I'm understanding correctly, you want to come the twenty-third, and then meet the next day at the LRA?
No, the sixteenth, if we, if they, this Thursday night, will that be enough of a notice for the twentieth and the twenty-fourth?
For the twenty-fourth, yes, Katie said we'd have to announce tomorrow for the twenty-fourth.
Okay, all right, so, can you, can you make that happen, Andrea? Okay, make that, okay, all right.
Stick to these dates.
All right, so, so Andrea, I know you don't have anything else to do with, I think, so, so, we, we want to have, so we, we, from what we gathered tonight, they need to hear from us on the twentieth, so it's going to be a budget meeting, but it's a LRA budget meeting at six o'clock, and a regular, general funded budget. but it's a L R A budget meeting at six o'clock, and a regular, general funded budget meeting at seven o'clock. Okay, and we're gonna, we'll, we'll, we'll bring the meeting to, in, in the session as the L R A, and then we'll have to adjourn that meeting, and then we'll have to have, bring in the board supervisors meeting at seven o'clock, am I right?
Right.
That's March twentieth.
That's March twentieth, yes, sir.
Okay, now, on the fifteenth, our meeting starts at six o'clock.
On the sixteenth.
Sixteen, we're just there at the ninth.
Six o'clock, that's D dot first, you hear that? Six thirty, L R A, seven o'clock, regular board meeting.
Okay, March, uh, March twenty-third.
March twenty-third is economic development, so we need to organize like we talked about. Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay.
So we need to decide now, we're gonna put, we talked about the three, you know, we gotta, having the, the mayors, and somebody's got elected a chairman. And we, you mentioned, they will let, let, let anybody be the chairman, you see what I'm saying?
And, and they need to rotate.
All right, and rotate. And then, the twenty-fourth, after the EDC, we're gonna go to Fort Pickett.
On the twenty-fourth.
That's the, uh, Fort, well, it'd be.
So that's at nine o'clock, that's a two.
Yeah, for the L R A.
Yeah.
And then the fest, and the festivities start at eleven?
That's right.
And then, and then that's changing, that'd be Fort Barfoot, come on, Steve. I did read about, um, the, the gentleman, I don't know what, what ranking was, but, he was a hero. Anyway, anyway. I think we'll probably have to educate that next, which would be interesting. All right, now, all right, with that said, we got, we got, we got plenty of springtime meetings, and we're worried about April, when April gets, let's don't look at the calendar anymore. Y'all talk that away, comments from the board, Vice Chairman, Board, Supervisor Summers, Supervisor Vaughn.
And I wanted to mention the bowling alley.
Okay.
If you get a chance, go out there, it's, it's really.
Oh, did you make it at the grand opening thing?
Yes.
Okay, well, good. Okay, nice.
I represent the board.
Oh, great.
All right, thank you.
I'm from the board supervisor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, I appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Carson reminded me.
Yeah, he reminded me too, and I just couldn't make it. Um, did you, y'all make it at this too?
I made, I made out there, yeah, put a, grabbed a couple pictures, I guess they were on the website, yeah.
They did, all right.
They were, they were pretty peaceful, but I didn't get any, I didn't want them.
You have one, you got you some.
All right, the, supervisor.
I was waiting for John about an hour, but he's too tight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's kind of all I caught on it. So, and, the, uh, I would just ask the board to take up, Mr. Carson called me, and he said, hey, Steve, um, he said, uh, I, you know, these are the things I put, and maybe we missed some, to put it on the agenda for Thursday night, so please look at your agenda, if something's not right, if we could, try to make, you know, let, let Mr. Carson know, and I know it happens, or something might happen, but call, call me on Mr. Carson, say, hey, and this, this is not on there, and I requested it, or I thought it was gonna be on it, because there were so many things, and I, and I was trying to separate presentations from, and let me, let me, let me tell you that. So we all have a presentation, um, but it's a special one for, um, Chef, and so, uh, and, and, and we're doing it kind of in, not kind of, we're doing it in sequence, but. Okay, no, right, that's okay.
Yeah.
So, but, but usually my wife doesn't like this. But I should have shut up, okay.
I was going to kick you.
But, but I, I did, we'll work on it, thank you.
My hand to the face, kissing the sensor.
All right, motion to adjourn, so we've got a motion, probably, can I get a second? Got a second? Any further discussion, all in favor, please stand up. Thank you.
I don't need to vote, so I'm just gonna go in.
I think you were in favor.
Hey, Steve, treat it like a U P F man, the camera on you all the time.
Oh, okay. That's Holy Spirit. Thank y'all, thank you, thanks, Katie.